Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, August the 28th, 2017. First item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. If you could please rise and then please remain standing for Pastor David Whitcup from Thanksgiving Lutheran Church for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. On behalf of the people of Thanksgiving, thank you for your service and your leadership for our community. And as a dad of four in the Bellevue Public Schools, thank you so much for making Bellevue a great community to live in. So let us pray. God, as our minds are on the people of Houston tonight and the surrounding areas, we pray that your protection and relief for each of them. And God, as you navigated us through floodwaters and tornadoes, you used the people of Bellevue and the surrounding areas to take care of one another and to share in the burden and to continue to take care of one another. And God, as we come forward to tonight as a leadership body, we know, God, that leadership is important. So pray that you would quicken our minds, give us creativity. Lord, help us to think into the future, the plans and purposes you have for each one of us, and even more importantly, what you want to do together. So, Lord, we thank you for your presence tonight. Thank you for your guidance. Thank you for each person who makes up Bellevue, our leadership, police, fire, all who take place and make decisions. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Whitcup. Item number two. Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chamber. Item three, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes, and advisory committee reports.
Subitem one is the approval of the agenda.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
You.
Item B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless there is an item that the, a city council member or a citizen requests be removed from the agenda, in which case it will be placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Subitem one is the approval of minutes of the August 14, 2017 meeting of the city council. Item two, approval of claims. Item three, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. Mayor and city council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Any? See none?
I'll move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item four, approval of claims is under consent. Item five, special presentation, none. Six, liquor license, none. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Subitem A is ordinance number 3880, amending sections 2-203 and 2-205 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy for Bellevue City officials and employees.
Mr. Sullivan.
Could we have Sabrina read the title to that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3880, an ordinance to amend sections 2-203 and 2-205 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy for Bellevue City officials and employees. To repeal sections 2-203 and 2-205 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing and provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we postpone this item to the September 11th meeting.
And I second.
Move a motion, a second. Mr. Preister.
Just for understanding, why are we delaying something?
Okay. Yes. Well, first, I'd like to have all the council members here to weigh in on it. Secondly, I'm working on some changes to Councilman Shannon's amendments to tighten it up a little bit, maybe come to a compromise position. And I want time for that to go through legal.
Reasonable request, so I understand. Thank you.
Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. We'll move it to the September 11th meeting. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
Subitem A is ordinance number 3881, creation of the Firefighters Retirement Committee. I'll read the title. An ordinance to create Article 1 of Chapter 24, Sections 24-1 through 24-4 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the establishment of the Bellevue Firefighters Retirement Committee to provide for the approval of the bylaws for the same and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street, is on. I'm just curious as to who's on the retirement committee and how they were selected.
Mr. Frederick, the committee would be made up in accordance with the state statute that requires four of the members be firefighters. I am the plan sponsor, so I would be a member, and we've asked that a citizen be added to the committee. That's part of the agenda item. So if you want names, the names are part of the agenda.
Are there others that would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
It's continuing.
The second, the third reading, final reading, will be moved to September the 11th.
Right. Item B is ordinance number 3882, amending sections 4-10 and 5-10 of the City of Bellevue subdivision regulations regarding approved final plat and subdivision plat filing. Title is an ordinance to amend sections 4-10 and 5-10 of ordinance number 3704, City of Bellevue subdivision ordinance regarding approved final plat and small subdivision plat filing to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none, I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be September the 11th.
Item C is ordinance number 3883, which is the Annual Appropriations Bill. Title of the ordinance is ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriations Bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for the effective date.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. Mr. Sullivan.
We will also have a public hearing again on the same matter in two weeks.
Jim Risto with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. Just here tonight to be an advocate for the council to look at our LB840 program. I think the funding in the general line item is two and a quarter, and what we want to do is propose that you change that to $750,000, as originally the program was designed for. And maybe talk a little bit about the history since our council has largely turned over in the last two years here since this was approved. If you recall, that LB840 failed in 2012, largely in fact, probably because it had a half-cent sales tax tied to it, as well as possibly too far-reaching and not maybe focused on one area of improvement. So from a public's perspective, they couldn't get behind it. I think it failed one time before, 2008, somewhere along that line. So in 2014, the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation and the Bellevue Chamber teamed up together, feeling that this was an important economic tool for our city, and then rewrote LB840 and pretty well just tied it into the Highway 34 corridor, which encompasses approximately about 5,000 acres for our light industrial development, but we felt that was our best hat to hang on for potential growth in our community. And within that, 5,000 acres then would be funding up to that $750,000. If you recall, Chad Anderson, Tom Ackley, and I worked pretty hard on putting LB840 together and marketing LB840 and taking it to the voters, and I believe we had about a 57% voter approval to authorize that up to $750,000 for funding the Highway 34, or the LB840 program in the Highway 34 corridor. As we said earlier, I know our council has turned over, so I think it's important that we come here and talk again about the importance of this program, talk about how the voters had approved the backside of this. But what's important to understand, too, is LB840 gives you a 20-year time window for funding that program. So when it passed, I think it was 2015, late 2014, 15, it runs through 2035 to fund each year up to that $750,000. So as that clock ticks, when we lose a year, if we don't have $750,000 in, we can't go back and put $750,000 back in. So each year that we wait to put the $750,000 in, we lose that ground. So if you think about it, in whole, you're going to have $15 million across the 20 years if we fund now for that, for that economic development. And you put that in small terms on a 5,000-acre development, potential development, $15 million is a pretty small ask over the 20-year period to have available for economic incentives. And you think of it on the backside, I guess the way we use, we think about it like collecting in coins. So when you think about your general tax revenue as silver coins, you're able to collect those silver coins from real estate taxes, sales taxes, and hotel occupancy taxes. State statutes then limit your ability to spend those silver coins on economic development. So LB840 gives you the opportunity to convert those silver coins into gold coins. And then you've got authorized funds in LB840, which is what was important to our voters, to pass LB840 to allow you to use those tax revenues to promote economic development. So it gives you the authority to use those gold coins, whether it's to purchase or get an option on land, economic incentives that are designed for attracting a potential prospect in, as well as maybe doing some type of private investment and improve private property to get it ready for a site-ready. And bottom line, it aids in development. So what we're stressing is to not waste those silver coins on something that you could do otherwise within your city budget, use those gold coins for something that's proactive in those 5,000 acres. So again, from the chamber's perspective, we just want to encourage you to look at, reexamine in the budget. I think it's slated at $250,000 or two and a quarter. Is to take that to $750,000 this year. We've already lost two years in theory from 2015 to now, so that clock's ticking, and it's a great economic tool for us as we go forward on any project that we have some funding available. So behalf of the chamber, we just urge you to look at that budget line item and see if we could change that.
Are there any questions for Mr. Risto? Thank you.
My name is Steve Draper. I live at 9807 South 24th Street in Bellevue. In looking at the budget, requested $76.8 billion. I think the thing that really jumped out at me that I don't like is only adding $200,000 to our cash reserves out of $76.8 billion. I'm in retirement now, and I have a comfortable retirement, and one of the reasons I do is because I always follow the principle of spending less than I earned. And this city council has, over the last several years, I don't think has been as wise stewards as you could have been. And I think going forward, there needs to be a little more wisdom exercised. Thing I did not see on that budget, I'd like to know, of that $76.8 billion, what's the total amount of dollars that we're paying out in interest on our bonds, on every other thing where we are? I didn't see that line item in there, but I would like to see that in future budgets every single time. It needs to be prominently displayed how much money we're spending in interest. And I'll bet you it's over a million dollars that we're spending in interest on. And there's just no excuse for a city this large to not have a good cash reserve for emergencies. And, you know, when I was first married and first started having children, you start to incur some debt through buying houses and putting school, children through school. But as you mature, that gets paid off, you reach a point in your life where you don't incur debt anymore. And I'd say Bellevue is well past its retirement years. Bellevue has been around for a lot of time, several hundreds of years. There's no reason for a city the size of Bellevue to be borrowing money anymore, period, going forward in the future. So I would like to see a commitment from this city council that not to borrow any more money, period, for anything going forward. If you have to raise the tax levy to pay for it, do it. If you have to reduce services to do it, do it. But I want to see, on this particular budget, I'd like to see a commitment tonight from this council that you'll add at least a million dollars to our cash reserve from this budget that you're trying to approve now. Whatever means you got to do, and make a commitment, you're going to do that for each year for the next 10 years, add at least a million dollars to our cash reserves. And thank you very much for listening to me.
Mr. Preister.
Mr. Draper, before you get away, I like your reasoning, and I would like to have a large reserve. Can you tell me where that million dollars is going to come from?
You know, I think there's always going to be disagreement on what you ought to cut. And a lot of places, if they can't come to some type of agreement, they just do across the board. Just reduce everything across the board 1%, and there's your million dollars right there. So there is a way to do it if there's a will, but right now, I don't see the will being here in this city council.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Draper? Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Ackley, 4711 Borman Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm here to echo Jim Risto's earlier comments. I was one of the folks with Chad Anderson and Jim that back in 2013, after the LB840 initiative failed during the 2012 election, which again, it was tied to a half-cent sales tax increase. People don't want half-cent sales tax, so they tied the two together, and the proposition failed. But we began talking at the chamber and within the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation that the city has to have more tools to promote economic development. The tools are so limited in the state of Nebraska. TIF is the one most people are familiar with. The Advantage Act is another one. Very few people qualify for that. So TIF is the main one you see on real estate development. But LB840 allows you to convert normal revenue tax dollars. Jim did the analogy of silver coins and gold coins. Well, your normal revenue, you can't fund private development on private land. But if you use it with LB840 money, you can do so. You can put in sewer and infrastructure on other people's land that's private property. You can buy land and contribute it to them to incentivize them to come to Bellevue. You can do loan programs. There's any number of things in that LB840 program that was approved. But the chamber thought it was important, just like the city did in 2012, to get LB840. So we worked hard to do it. We raised money for it. We came to this council, and in August of 2014, which amazingly enough is three years ago already this month, you agreed to put it on the ballots and let the voters decide. And in November of 2014, by an over 57% margin, they approved giving the city the tool to promote economic development in Bellevue. And what the chamber did at that time is we wanted to narrow the focus of where those monies could be spent. In 2012, the program allowed monies to be spent anywhere throughout the city. And one of the complaints that was heard during some of the meetings to explain at that time the program was that the city could just use their general tax revenues anywhere in the city, or they could divert the LB840 funding to fund things that general revenues would otherwise fund. Whether that's why it failed or not, I don't know, but that's one of the complaints that was heard. So when we redid it in 2014, we focused it only on the 5,000 acres that are south of Offutt Air Force Base, east of Highway 75, north of the Cass County Line, and then east of the river. That 5,000 acre, which again, they call it the Highway 34 corridor. At that time, Highway 34 was under construction, and it was well-spoken of in terms of being the next industrial area for our city. And if you look at the boundaries of our city and the opportunities we have to grow, they are limited. We're bounded by a county line on the south, a river on the east. We've got boundaries in place already with Papillion pretty much on the west side, and on the north, we've got another county line. So we're limited in our growth. But the one place we can grow is in that Highway 34 corridor. So the voters approved that the city could fund up to $750,000 a year, which as Jim said, over the course of 20 years, that's only $15 million. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and yet think about it, trying to promote development in 5,000 acres and you've got $15 million. I think one of the line items in your budget for this year is to improve Cunningham Road. Cunningham Road is going to be less than a mile long, and to put in a road and water and sewer infrastructure, I believe is $5.5 million in your budget. I mean, less than a mile of road and infrastructure can cost that much money. So for us not to fully fund LB840, again, it's so limited already in what we can do with it, we are shortchanging ourselves if we don't fully fund it. So I was thrilled when the voters in 2014 approved it. I have not been so thrilled in terms of how the city has gone forward and not funded it. In 2015, we funded $250,000. We left $500,000 on the table. In 2016, we funded $250,000. We left $500,000 on the table. Your budget this year again is putting $250,000 into that bucket, we're leaving another $500,000 on the table. So over the course of three years, we are not going to take advantage of $1.5 million that could go to incentivize businesses to come into Bellevue and develop that economic corridor. And to me, I believe that's short-sighted. So that's why I'm here. I'm asking this council for 2017, the new budget coming forward, to fund the full $750,000, and every year going forward, fund it, because we will easily find projects and find developers who want to do something in that corridor, and we're going to have limited resources to incentivize them to do it. So please, I'm begging you, this year, fund it fully, $750,000. It'll be the best investment you make of our tax dollars, because it'll return many, many times over. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ackley? Mr. Shannon?
Tom, I think, I agree with what you're saying in spirit. We'd all like to see this developed. We'd like to see these, you know, light industrial businesses come here and, you know, build and hire people and do things. But if you're going to ask us to put something in the budget, don't you think you need to tell us what you want to do this year that we need to put this money in there for?
Actually, I don't, Mr. Shannon. Under LB840, you can put the money away for up to five years. So we're storehousing money. We're getting money built up. And again, we need to promote this corridor. We need to get people to come in there. But we've put the money in there, and it's ready. If we get an application that you feel is worthy, that you say, you know what, we want to incentivize this business. These folks want to bring 500 jobs in. We are willing to put sewer and infrastructure in from the road across your property to your building. Or we are willing to help you buy the land you want to come here, things you can't otherwise do with your general revenue budget. And if that money goes into that pot for five years and you don't use it, it starts rolling off on the other end and goes back into your general revenue budget. So you're not going to lose it, you're isolating it. As Jim said, you're converting these silver coins into gold coins. You cannot buy with your regular revenue the things you can buy with LB840 money, which is why it's so important. We are short-sighted not to fund that every year completely, because you can buy things with that for economic development that you cannot buy with regular revenue funds. That's why it's important to fill the bucket, Mr. Shannon.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Ackley? Mr. Ackley, thank you for all your work on LB840, and we support you 100%. Thank you for all your work.
$750,000 would be 100%, Mayor.
Thank, we'll take it under consideration. Thank you.
My name is Brian Holan, and I am Senior Managing Partner with Platinum One Investment Insurance Group. I'm a business owner, I'm a financial advisor for the past 18 years. I'm also probably, I would guess, one of the newest residents of Bellevue in this room. I moved from Kearney about, what was it, November of last year, bought a home here. I had a number of places that I could choose to put my business and choose to live, but I chose Bellevue. And I want to thank each one of you for your leadership in making Bellevue a good place to live and a good place for me to move to, because I did have a choice about that. I had a choice of staying in Kearney because I still maintain an office in Kearney, and I formed a partnership with a Bellevue advisor, and that was again, by purpose, after I researched Bellevue and found what a good place it was to do business and a good place to be. I'm here on behalf of myself and my business and other business owners. What I do for a living is help people make wise financial decisions. I help them make decisions that will benefit them in the future, but it's more about the community that they're in, their families, and the workplaces that they're in. I work with business owners. I help them design financial plans that will help that business continue to go to the next owner and to continue to serve that base of clients and customers. I help people make decisions about their estates that will help them take advantage of the tax laws that are on the books so that there will be a strong legacy that's left for themselves, for their communities, and that's great work. I love doing what I do. And I'm here tonight not because I'm an expert on this, I'm probably less knowledgeable than most people in this room about your budget and about what needs to happen with this corridor. And yet, I see a huge opportunity, and that's my job as a financial advisor, is to help people see opportunities and take advantage of them. This is a huge opportunity that's been laid at our doorstep. And I would also like to thank Jim Risto and his team with the chamber, because they've done a great, great service to this community by getting LB840 put in place. I look at LB840 as I do with a lot of my clients, and that is, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity for our future. If someone decides that it's time to start putting into an IRA, it's usually because they're urged into it. They don't usually do that on their own. And usually, it isn't without sacrifice. Usually, you have to sacrifice something today so that 20 or 30 years down the road, you'll have a solid financial time during your retirement years. The same way is in estate planning. Usually, something is sacrificed to pay that premium. Sometimes, it's a big sacrifice. I have people that write a check for 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 dollars a year for a life insurance policy so that their families can be protected, so that their legacy can be protected. And I think that's a lot like what we're looking at here tonight. I'm asking you to invest in the corridor. I mean, asking you to invest $750,000. It's a little bothersome to me that we have left a million dollars on the table, and that's what I would call, in the investment world, I would call that opportunity. what I would call, in the investment world, I would call that opportunity lost. And that's, that's an opportunity that we won't get back again. But just like I tell all of my clients, we don't look backwards, we don't, we don't worry about what's happened in the past, we just look forward and we do the right thing going forward. So what I'm asking you to do is to commit to the 34 corridor, to commit $750,000, and do what's right for the future, because it will pay us back, and it will not only pay us back, it will pay back the generations that follow us. And so, we need long-term financial planning for the city, the voters have authorized $750,000. So I believe that we need to pay ourselves first. We need to get into that, to put the $750,000 each year going forward, and so that we'll have that legacy. So what will our legacy be? And I'd ask each of you to ask yourselves that, what will my legacy be? How will I leave Bellevue better than when I came here? So, thank you for this opportunity. I'm hoping that you will take advantage of what's been put before you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Holan?
Welcome to Bellevue.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Sepharic. I'm an associate broker with MP Dodge Real Estate. And I made some notes here, I saw the appropriations bill coming for the budget, and I just, as I stand here and listen to the people that talk before me, I'm a little unnerved by the fact that, that we are even having the discussion of something that was passed three years ago, four years ago by the public, it was voted on, they agreed to the appropriations of the funds, and yet, those funds have not been allocated to that, to that use. So I look at one thing, I'm a lifelong resident of the Sarpy and Bellevue community area, and I look for ways to improve our community, and I work on it every day. When you're, when you're working in the real estate side, you're working in that arena, commercial, residential, whatever the case may be, we look for that support of the community to grow, because I'm not going to, I don't want to go to a market that's stagnated or stagnant, or that the people that control the community aren't looking for the same thing that I am. And that's for growth and potential of what's, what's to come. So, I've been at it for 35 years, and I don't claim to be an expert in my field either, because I learn every day. But as I, as I hear what's being said, I'm a little bit shocked to that, that it was approved in 2014. It's considered a key component of our growth as a community, for that arena to grow and that corridor, and that money's not being placed. So it's kind of a no-brainer that we, as the last speaker said, Mr. Holan said, we pay ourselves first, because we're investing in the future. And what is our legacy? Our legacy is to provide a better place than what we started in. So, we can't continue to squander opportunities. I feel that this is a, is an opportunity that we're not going to, not going to have again in our lifetimes. I mean, it could happen, but I don't see it happening without the proper funding. I guess, in summation, I would look that it would be everybody's intent in this room, not only who's in front of me, but who's behind me, that it would be our goal to better this community position, and to be that common goal, to be a growth and thriving community, that we want to be seen as the place that there's opportunity. So, as they come into this region, into the Midwest region, where are our opportunities best placed? And I want Bellevue to be one of the first things I think of. We've got great leadership in place in a lot of sectors, we just need to continue to work together. And again, the voters have voted, I look at one thing, and that is perception by the community. What, what, if they understand what's going on here, that we have not funded, what they voted for, what's the perception by the community as to what's happening? So I would ask that, you know, we see that $750,000 put into that fund, we want some stabilization, because it's, it's all about business retention, we want those military alliances to stay in place, we want them to stay in Nebraska once they retire, or they decide that military life is done and they want to move into the private sector. And we want that tax base to stay, we want the revenue to stay, we want it to stay in this community and not be shared to those outlying areas. That's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sepharic. Are there any questions? Sinan, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else like to speak on this item? I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The final reading, the third and final reading, will also be on September the 11th. Moving on to item nine, Mr. Preister.
Before you move on, just a couple of quick comments. We hear people wanting LB-840 funds, we hear people wanting a new library, though not tonight, we hear people wanting to have a new aquatic center, we hear cutting back 1% to put in a reserve. All of these things are things that are going to take money from other areas. Our challenge is to find where those areas come from, if we do take them. This is not only a 1% cut for putting money aside in a rainy day fund, our finance department, our administration, and all of our staff have not only cut 1% already from their proposed budgets, in some cases, they've cut 5% already, and in some cases, they've cut 10% already. We're cutting pretty deeply into just maintaining. And this year is not easy, but it's going to be way easier than next year. Next year, we're going to have to replace two safer grants for our firefighters and our professionalization of our fire department. The public said that too is very important. We're going to, we have a police department that had to cut its budget sizably, and people want public safety, and they ask for that regularly. This budget has not been an easy budget, like none of them have been, but it's going to only get harder after this. And I don't have good answers where all of these things are going to come from. We've got the park staff that's understaffed, and we've annexed, we've added parklands, we've got the street department that's had more streets added that they have to maintain, and we have continually stretched them. We can only stretch these things so far. We've got streets that aren't always paved, and we have balanced the budget on the back of the Public Works Department and these positions. So, I would like very much to have a new library, new aquatic center, fully fund LB-840. But I just, we've done so much work balancing this, I'm not sure where that money's going to come from. And at this point, that's why we get paid the big bucks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other, other comments? Thank you. I'll move on to item number nine, ordinance for an adsection, first reading.
Item A is ordinance number 3884, amending section 484, excuse me, 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of dangerous buildings. The title is an ordinance to amend section 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of dangerous buildings, to repeal section 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance. So I have a public hearing on September 11.
Thank you. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance.
Item A is public hearing on the request from Midwest Fireworks for a fireworks display at the conclusion of the Bellevue East Homecoming Football Game on September 22, 2017.
Is there anyone here?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wagner, and I reside at 106 Lafayette Lane. That was about six weeks ago. And I'm also the principal of Bellevue East, and I was just here to ask for your approval to do the fireworks display that we had last year. We had about a 10-minute display at the end of our homecoming game, and we'd like to do that again. It was very well received by our community. No tax dollars or general fund dollars are used for that display, it's all private donations. And this year, we are actually putting some signs out to notify the public a little bit. That was two of the complaints that I did here last year, so we're taking some steps to rectify that. And I would just hope that you would approve us to have that display again, because it is such a positive event for our students, our staff, and our community.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I appreciate your service to the students and to the education in our community. I noticed that for the 150th year anniversary, the First Lady, instead of doing fireworks at a display, has some other alternative that's equally entertaining, but not as destructive to the veterans or to the environment, and you may just want to look into that for future years, so maybe a good example for the students to be a little better stewards of the environment. And I wish I had brought the contact information, but I just saw that she had done that, so...
First, the First Lady of the state?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we'll certainly look into that.
Governor Rickett's wife.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Wagner? Sinan, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing now. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. Sinan, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from Midwest Fireworks for a fireworks display at the conclusion of the Bellevue East Homecoming Football Game on September 22nd, 2017.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Sinan, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 11, resolutions.
Subitem A is resolution number 2017-14, accepting the low base bid from Waste Connections Inc., doing business as Papillion Sanitation, for the collection, transfer, and delivery of residential solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste, proposal and to direct the Public Works Department to begin final pricing based on options and billing negotiations with MUD.
What are the wishes of the council?
Somebody wants...
Mr. Preister. Mr. Preister?
If you need to do something first, I was going to make the motion to approve it.
I think we have someone here that wants to speak, so question, Mr. Modri.
Yeah, I move to open up to public hearing.
And I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shannon.
Should we have the motion to have it on the floor first?
Mr. Preister?
I'll move to approve resolution number 2017-14, accepting the low base bid from Waste Connections.
Thank you.
I'll second that as well.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Mr. Modri.
And now, I'll make my motion to open up for public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion questions? Sinan, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And now, open for public hearing on resolution 2017-14. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time.
So if I understand correctly, the vote's been taken?
No.
Nope.
Just on allowing public testimony.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, Joe. My name is Ammon Taylor, I work with Waste Management, we are the competitive proposer to the company that has been recommended for approval to you tonight, and I represent them. Let me go ahead and fill this out before I forget. My address is 1303 South O Street in Indianola, Iowa, come from across the river again, representing Waste Management. And I appreciate the chance to be here. Working with Joe and Jeff and Epiphany through this process has been a privilege, they've all been fantastic to work with, I couldn't speak higher of them. I'm going to be really short, because I know you've got a long agenda item, I have a lot of thoughts, though, so I tried to put them into bullet points. We, you know, we can share. There's really three main points to this, I'll put them there in bold for you, that I'm asking for your consideration on. Basically, the cost is incredibly close on these. The added benefits we bring on behalf of Waste Management are worth the few extra pennies each resident would pay, and the benefit that that would bring to the environment. The Bellevue RFP placed heavy emphasis on reducing the waste stream. Our projections more fully support this objective of the city, as well as our outreach and education material for the residents. And this contract implementation date isn't until May 2018, and so we're asking you to take the time to make the right decision, and as council members fully vet through these two proposals, so you can see the distinctions, which, the keys of which, the highlights of which, I'll mention here. The costs came down, when you compare the cumulative totals, and again, Joe mentioned that there's some optional pricing there, I can't speak to what the city wants to do with optional pricing, but at the base, it's a difference of about $6.34 per the two proposals. But the way the city had the pricing built represents three cart sizes over three years. So when you divide that 6.34 by nine, to kind of average it out, what we're talking about is 70 cents per month, per household. Less than a cup of coffee per month is the difference between these two proposals. It's incredibly close for an about $35 million contract over 10 years. And we feel that the value our proposal represents justifies that added 70 cents per month per household. For example, an extra free bulk item pickup per home, per month. We're offering 12 bulk item pickups per year, that's above and beyond the specification details that were asked for by the city, which were two, and which the competition has committed to. We're offering 12, so if you have an extra TV, an extra dresser, an extra mattress, we take it without cost, above and beyond those two per year. In addition, our, our well-designed website, which I invite any of you with a mobile device or laptop to visit, home.wm.com/bellevue, we have tailored a website specifically to Bellevue. So when your residents go to Google, and there's a big snowstorm, and they type in, "is my trash delayed, Bellevue, Nebraska?", it comes up with this website to help redirect the information to the residents through the online platform, as opposed to maybe having to call the city, which would add to your cost and additional staff and so forth. Now, to be fair, I believe the, per the specifications of the RFP, both haulers are required to have a website, but I don't have any, I haven't seen the competitive website, and in the proposal from the competition, which is public information, it's not highlighted, it's not exemplified, and again, I would invite you to visit ours and see how well-designed it is. We can even add links in there to groups like Green Bellevue, that we want to partner with to help educate your residents. Also, our enhanced color-printed resident education material, of which I've included an example, this is all stuff that we do proactively. The city of Bellevue doesn't have to go about managing this process themselves. You can see on the back, if you read through this, we've hypothetically imagined what we would do to help the city implement this change. We're proposing here on the back of this postcard, one of which would be mailed to all of your residents if we were privileged to win the bid, that we have an open house, and the residents can come and choose their cart size, or if they're not able to make the open house, they can go on to the website and choose it there. So, enhanced education material is going to be key to bring the residents through this transition. To the second point there, Bellevue RFP placed heavy emphasis on reducing the waste stream. The city specifically highlighted in the specifications and verbally throughout pre-bid meetings how important it was that we help residents reduce the waste stream, increase the recycling, and increase the yard waste, and that the yard waste specifically be composted, which hadn't been done before. In fact, one hauler, not Waste Management, and I don't know if it was one of the other two that were involved in the process, asked that that, that a requirement be removed from the city's specifications to allow reduced pricing for smaller trash sizes, but that change is so important to the city, they rejected that request, saying here, "The city will not remove this pricing option. We understand that the proposer will need to use the pricing structure to cover all costs, profits, et cetera. The discount should be created to accurately reflect said costs per collection point." The discount should be created to accurately reflect said costs per collection point. However, the primary reasoning for large differentiation of cost is to drive a behavior of waste control on the part of the resident and allow those that waste less to pay less, driving the behavior." Now, again, to be fair, per the specification requirements, both proposals do allow for that differentiated pricing. But our proposal forecasts significantly were higher than the competition as to how many of your residents we can help to get a cart for trash smaller than 96 gallons. Our projections show 55% of your residents choosing smaller than a 96-gallon cart, whereas the competitive proposal only committed to working towards a 25% goal, having 25% of your residents choose smaller than a 96-gallon cart. When you do the math over the full 10 years of the contract, that means we helped divert more than 114 million gallons of trash relative to the forecast we have compared to the competitions. For yard waste, we project we can work to have 100% of your residents choosing a 96-gallon cart, whereas the competitive proposal shows 75%. Again, if we're successful in achieving forecasts relative from one to another, that means we helped divert more than 76 million more gallons of yard waste to compost than our competitors' forecast projects. So, in summary, again, given that there's extensive time yet for this, your current contract to end and for a new contract to be implemented, we would ask that the City Council reject the staff recommendation to accept the competitive proposal and urge the council members to review for themselves the facts presented between the two proposals. I'm happy to work with you one-on-one to review those, to highlight any of those and answer any questions you may have. And after detailed comparison, if, you know, the vote is what it is, go ahead and make it as you need to make it. But being that this is a 10-year contract for $35 million, we would welcome that additional consideration. I'm not asking you to go back to bid. I'm not asking you tonight to vote for us. I'm just asking you to say no tonight, so you can take a little bit more time to individually review those two proposals, compare the facts for yourself, and make the right decision for your city.
Are there any questions for Mr. Taylor? Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Taylor, looking at the two companies that, you know, we're deciding between here, you know what the average age of your trucks are? Because I was making a comparison between the trucks you see driving around right now, you know, for the Papillion Sanitation trucks versus Waste Management trucks.
Great question, great question.
It just seems to me that your trucks are a lot newer.
In general, I'd like to say yes, they are. Though on the sales side, not the operations, I can't confirm. But I can, and Epiphany will confirm, the city's RFP requires that all vehicles be new trucks. So, both the competition's cost and ours reflect that.
Okay.
And so, whoever wins, you'll get entirely new trucks.
All right. And we're going to try to get them to say Bellevue sanitation on them?
We're going to put vehicles on Carol's lawn. Sounds beautiful, for sure. We've already started with the recycling one, so we'll come up with a different marketing campaign that'll help it out.
Epiphany, you're not on a microphone, so I'm going to ask you to come up to speak in just a minute. So, let's make, let's, these directions, these questions are directed to Mr. Taylor. Are we, do we have any other questions for Mr. Taylor to answer?
They'll all be new. They might not all be green.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Mr. Preister.
Mr. Taylor, I appreciate you coming in and sharing information and trying hard on behalf of your company. Currently, you're picking up the Omaha trash, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. This is a great expansion of the market, and we've seen and heard lots of challenges with the Omaha market and cutting out the yard waste and things going on there. An additional large contract in the same large metropolitan area, how do we know that you're going to be able to handle all that?
Great question. I appreciate the chance to address it. First off, let me say that we acquired a company, Deffenbaugh. And when we came in and inquired Deffenbaugh, they were not completing at the end of each day the required routes per contract for that day. Now, we are. At the end of each day, we are at 100%. Director Stube of Omaha, the director of their public works, actually wrote a very kind recommendation letter for us on our behalf that we included in the proposal to the City of Bellevue. If you haven't had a chance to see it, I'd be happy to share that with you. And then, I would also add that because this is an entirely separate contract, because we have to buy new trucks per specification, all of the costs allocated for our Bellevue proposal are exclusive to Bellevue. They're not costs that we have projected to intermingle in any way. Your trucks will be for the City of Bellevue. The route manager hired, if we're privileged to win the contract, runs the City of Bellevue. We wouldn't cross mingle in any way.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Sullivan?
I just want to make sure I understand this three-point deal that you handed out.
Sure.
On the second one, where you refer to our projections show 55% of your residents choosing smaller than 96 carts, where the competitive proposal shows 25%, all of those are just projections, right? We have no idea what the number's going to be regardless of what company is going to be there, correct?
That's correct. But when this company is building its costs and its profit, we're considering those projections. And so, we're naturally inclined to meet those projections in order to meet the profit expectation that we have as part of the proposal.
So, I guess the only way that those numbers, I think, would mean something to the council if you have a level of predictability as to how that's worked in other areas, because you could say, "We're projecting 75%," but we don't know if you're ever going to get there.
Sure. Maybe I can give a minute of history as to how this came about. In the proposal, again, the city wants residents to have the ability to pay less if they're going to use a smaller trash cart, but not have to pay more if they want a larger recycling or yard waste cart. That was detailed in the RFP. But the city has no idea who is going to choose what size cart and how that's going to happen. They do know from a survey, and I'm happy to be corrected in any way if I misspeak, that one of the major pieces of feedback from your residents was that they didn't like the larger-sized carts. So, that's part of the reason why we had each, each hauler, us and Waste Connections, had to decide for themselves what our estimates would be of how many residents we could get to choose a 96-gallon cart, how many we could get to choose a 65-gallon cart, and how many we could get to choose a 35-gallon cart. Those projections we make also therefore reflect into our pricing and our profitability. So, we are very much inclined to meet those in order to meet the projected profit we hope for under this contract. So, while the city couldn't provide us any data because they didn't know, you're absolutely right, we had no idea either. But both haulers should be naturally inclined to meet those projections because their profitability is based on them. So, in that sense, because we have projected that we can have more residents choose a trash cart smaller than 96 gallons, and we're incentivized to meet that goal, we would very much hope that we can bring that, that greater option to your residents, that more of your residents choose to have that smaller cart size.
I think I follow what you're saying, but what I'm not following in this is what unique about your, is unique about your company that you're going to get 100% of the residents going to the 96-gallon cart for the yard waste, where the competitor's only doing 75%. Aren't these just all guesses?
They're educated estimates.
Well, but maybe your competitor was just more conservative in his approach.
Perhaps so. But if he is, and his estimates turn out to be accurate, the city isn't getting the change it hoped for by reducing the volume of trash that the residents are putting out. To answer your question, though, about how we go about in a better way than the competitive hauler in meeting those estimates, it's through the educational material that we bring to your residents. It's through that detailed website, which, again, I'd welcome all of you to go and visit right now. It's a live website that you can go and see that brings that education to your residents to help drive that change you're looking for. As far as I'm aware, the competitive hauler hasn't provided such education in the past. I don't know what level of it they're able to provide to this degree of professionalism in the future.
Thank you.
Epiphany, would you come up and give an overview, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you have more questions for Ammon?
Want to have more of the public? Let her answer.
I think we're good, yeah. No, we're not closing public, but I wanted her to respond. You had some questions for Epiphany and then give her, give us an overview.
First, I want to say thanks for listening to Ammon and thanks for reading my recommendation. I appreciate it. I know it's kind of unprecedented to have the proposer come in, the opposite proposer, and of course, continue to pitch during the council after the staff recommendation. So, I agree with Ammon that you need to do your, look at the proposals. I certainly spent a lot of time combing through them, as I did combing through the RFP hour after hour, day after day, making sure that these specifications best reflected what our residents asked for and what's going to stabilize those prices moving forward for Bellevue. So, I guess to kind of lay it out there, the recommendation is pretty concise. We really went off of, that was the low bid. They met the specifications in that contract. They have always been, you know, the customer service level and the willingness to work with Bellevue has exceeded anything that I could have expected from a contractor. And one thing to point out, and like Ammon said, the proposals are public knowledge. Waste Management is a very large company, of course. Waste Connections is a little bit smaller. One of the things Waste Management proposal did add some verbiage into was that they wanted to make sure that we were able to negotiate terms and conditions before executing a contract. Now, the RFP had an encompassing contract in it with all of the terms and conditions that we worked so hard, and everybody in our legal department agreed upon. Our other proposer during that process said we accept those terms and conditions right up front. So, that's something else that maybe I didn't make very clear in that recommendation because I didn't think it was worth kind of throwing that mud. But at the end of the day, that was something that was considered as well. So, it's something to think about. And if you guys have any questions for me, this, again, is just the award to move forward with Papillion Sanitation so that we can work over the next almost year to come up with a really good implementation plan, not only education, but the logistics of how we get started.
Mr. Shannon?
I guess the relevant question would be, are you moved to change your recommendation based upon the play here?
I am not.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Manjumelli?
Just one thing also to point out is this is just a resolution to authorize staff to detail a contract to be brought back to you at an upcoming meeting. So, we will do that in the next couple of weeks. The year that we're talking about is for purchase of the new equipment to collect the materials, all of the bins of whatever size the public will demand, to begin the public information process, send out as many postcards, as many mailings, as much information through town hall meetings to educate the public on a new contract. So, that's what the year will be spent doing. So, again, this, this is just to authorize us to bring forward to you a contract with specific costs based on the options that we believe the council has found acceptable. And if that, if that is deemed inadequate at the, at an upcoming council meeting, then we'll do our homework again. But the recommendation this evening is to accept the proposal from Waste Connections and allow us to bring back a specific contract amount.
Are we making this decision tonight on once versus every other week on recycle? Or are those things coming up?
No, that'll be, that'll be, as Joe incited in the contracting. So, I think it's good that I put that out there because I think that is a discussion point, as is some of the other options if you wanted information on. But at least wanted to get the proposals in your hands, my recommendation, and an evaluation for you guys so that we can move forward with Papillion Sanitation and begin that hefty process.
Any other questions for Epiphany? Thank you. We're still open for public hearing?
Hi, Brian Hanson, 2704 Georgia Avenue. I sent an email on Saturday to all the council members and city administration with some questions and issues I had with this. Frankly, as a citizen, I appreciated the process that Epiphany went through. It seemed, seemed to be very logical and very orderly. I appreciate the gentleman who spoke first. This is a huge contract for Bellevue, next to snow shoveling. Picking up the trash is a city municipal function, and it impacts everybody. In 10 years, $35 million, I think, is the gravity of this contract is huge. I appreciate Mr. Manjumelli's comments about, this is just the first step. My questions were more detailed, but I basically want the best service at the lowest price, as does anybody naturally would and stuff. So, hopefully, we'll get to that. But the one thing that I think we need to nail down is we just heard a comment a moment ago about, is it bi-weekly recycling or is it every-week recycling? If we're saying this is a contract and we're moving forward, we need to have those things nailed down tonight and stuff. Also, looking through the proposals, I had some difficulty understanding, but am I required to take the same-size container across the board for all three commodities? Or will I be able to adjust? Because I understand, and I appreciate, and I support the move to automation. You know, to mechanically pick up the waste materials and recyclables and do those things efficiently and effectively, I think is a good thing for Bellevue. It's a good thing for, for looking ahead. However, when the leaves fall in the fall, I have 10 containers of leaves. I don't mulch on my property. I don't have the ability to. My grass, my soil condition doesn't mulch grass well, and I need to get rid of leaves. In the old days, we used to rake them to the gutter, and they'd come by in a giant vacuum and, you know, take them all away with the city. I mean, maybe that's something we also do. I don't know. I'd also like to comment that the bulk pickups or the large, you know, in conjunction with our cleanup days, I look at Papillion, and they have four days of cleanup days that go on. We have one. And if you're out of town that day, it's two, well, we have two a year, but I'm saying, Papillion has eight a year of them. You know, they have like four days in the spring, four days in the fall. So, what I'm saying is if you miss that one day in Bellevue, you're out of luck, you know, if you're out of town or, or whatever. So, those are just a couple of thoughts. I think this proposal, as I mentioned in my email, I think this proposal is getting close, but I don't quite feel that it's ready yet to be finalized. Maybe we need some more public input. And I would suggest forums, library, et cetera, because I'm kind of just reading on the periphery, but you're going to impact every resident in Bellevue with this change and, and things like, do I have to pour a concrete pad in my house to store these containers? I don't want three 96-gallon containers. I want one maybe, but I want, you know, I could fill that up for a year with trash. They only stop once for trash and stuff at my house. But, you know, that's, those are the types of things that people have to look to. Where are they going to be put? Behind the fence in the backyard, or are they going to be left at the curb? These are things that all impact us and stuff. Do we want to drive down the streets and see, you know, orange and green and red containers left out for three or four days at a time? I particularly don't want to. So, I think we, I think we still have time, but I think, I would recommend that the council, you know, take a look at things and, and just get some, solicit some public opinion on it. If, you know, put an insert in the MUD mailing and stuff next month and say, "Here's where we're going to. We're having a meeting on thus-and-so date," and open it up and stuff. But if you don't do that, I think it's going to fall flat, and you're going to have more complaints and more resistance and more people saying that, "Why are you doing this to me? I've done it this way for the last 15 years." So, those are my thoughts. Thanks for listening.
Epiphany, you want to give a recap, please?
I just want to say I appreciate folks like Brian. When they come to me with their, with their issues or their questions, it's good to sit down, and that's how the scope was developed. So, essentially, directly to Brian, the reason why we went against the grain, and originally, Bellevue was out there in left field saying, "Hey, we feel that every resident needs to be able to select what size container for what waste stream, and they, and it should be inequitably priced per household," which is completely different than the subsidized model that really wasn't fitting the needs. So, to answer Brian's specific question, the residents will be able to select what size container per what waste stream. And if residents don't recycle, they don't need to have a recycling container. If residents don't use yard waste, they don't need to have a yard waste container. It's really not a one-size-fits-all. This is one of the most comprehensive RFPs and scopes of services that the state of Nebraska has ever seen. It's groundbreaking, and the one thing that is groundbreaking about it is it really puts the power back in the person to make that decision, less being the power back in the person to make that decision, less being, you know, here's what you get and don't throw a fit. It's really what would you like to do and how would you like to manage your waste service? And we are just here to leverage our volume buying power as a municipality to get you the best price for that service and utilize our existing logistics and infrastructure to implement that for you. So, Brian, please reach out to me personally and I'll go over all the specifics. And that definitely goes for every resident in Bellevue. And I've responded personally to a lot of folks and usually, once they get to talk to me and get all of those specifics, which is just part of that year plan, to get education out and get out in front of as many people as possible. One thing to piggyback off of Brian's public consensus statement, not only has Bellevue been involved in the pilot and the survey, which is the reason to try to get public consensus, but also now Omaha is doing the same thing and is getting a lot of the exact same comments that our Bellevue residents came. So, that's a very validating fact that everything that Brian is mentioning is what other people are thinking and feeling as well. So, I feel very confident that we've included that, but I think that there's always something to learn and we'll definitely get that through the more personal contact we get with our residents.
Mr. Manjumelli.
Mr. Hanson, you indicated that you had sent an email to me as well as to the city council members over the weekend. I didn't receive that email. I don't know if the council did. You might want to resend it tomorrow.
I'll resend it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Epiphany, all of the things that were mentioned, whether it's picking up once a week or twice a month for the yard or for the recycling, is going to be the same for either contract, all of those add-ons and all those other things. So, the issue of, we need to look at this more, is that valid or isn't everything going to be the same for both contractors?
So, the intention for having, what maybe a good nomenclature to use is alternates, because I know you guys do a lot of construction contracts where you might be able to select an alternate. What we did in this contract is options. I did feel like I wanted to give you guys the public consensus that I took and that you should understand that making the changes to that scope of service, what the fiscal impact was. Because some people do want a value-added service that's actually going to cost more. And so, you as the council, I felt like needed to understand those options and what those pieces of this increased scope of service that residents are requesting costs, you know, so you can really make that decision based on what your constituents are able to tell you that they want and based on the research and information that I can provide you. So, those are the options that we're talking about and that'll come through that contracting process. What I anticipate is to provide you with recommended options based on everything that we've found. And if the council wants to then break out things for specific votes to include those other options, it's going to be very easy for you to do because they're based on a unit price per option increase or decrease. And again, if you guys want to look at that more specifically, what exactly does she mean? You can certainly, we can certainly go over that.
Thank you.
Did that answer the question? I hope so.
Thank you again. We're still open for public hearing?
Am I able to address the comment again?
Sure. Well, we, let's wait for him. We've got one more public.
I already signed it earlier. From everything I've heard and read tonight, you know, all of the detailed questions that people have been asking, that's what's going to be worked out over the next year in the contract process. That's not something that is done here tonight. All that's happening here tonight is, which of these two companies do we want to move forward with? And the Public Works Director, you know, Wastewater Operations Manager made a recommendation to the council, which I think was a sound recommendation based upon a sound reasoning. And as Patrick Sullivan, the city attorney, so ably brought out, we need to ignore any of the speculations or potential promises of added services or added capabilities that we need to ignore and only look at what the specifications in the RFP required and not look at any of the other because it's, as he said, it's mere speculation. And I think it's a good choice going with this particular company. I like the fact that one of you brought out some questions to Waste Management about how we're already having the Omaha contract. And I think there's a danger in having one large company have too much of the business in a metropolitan area. For one good reason is that companies don't stay in business. Companies do go out of business, as Deffenbaugh went out of business because, or was bought out, but still. And when you have one huge company that has such a bulk of the business in a metropolitan area and they change hands or they go out of business, that can really be a devastating impact to a large metro area when that happens. Also, management changes at companies and goals and ideals at companies change. And so, that's why you have to ignore, you know, promises that are not specified in the contract itself. So, I urge you just to move forward and accept the Waste Connections as the low bid and to move forward. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draper.
I'll be but a minute. I just want to address some of the points that were relative to our proposal. First off, Epiphany made a great point that this is a very comprehensive review that has been done. One of the things she highlighted was that we did highlight that we would still want to negotiate terms and conditions. That's true, and that is something we put in because we wanted to negotiate with the city the price increase structure. As it stood in the RFP, it was asking for us to share some cost information, which we felt was proprietary. So, that was one of the things that, that was the primary thing that caused us to put that in there. But again, to her point that this is such a comprehensive thing and you're trying to drive this incredible change with your residents, because we're the largest hauler in the nation, we have those resources, we have the ability through our education material with the residents, which far surpasses that of the competition, to bring the best value to your residents. And that's why we feel we would be worth the 70 cents per month. And that's all I would share. Thank you.
Are there others? See none? Now, go ahead and close the public hearing.
We have the motion.
Do we have any questions or discussion from the council?
Already have.
No, we already have a motion. We're ready to vote if there aren't any further questions or discussion. Mr. Preister, did you have a question?
Just the comment about the weekly recycling collection versus twice a month collection. And I think we will need some more discussion on that, and that will be a part of it. I would have the preference that we do it every week for consistency. That small amount, less than a dollar, that we would pay, to me, is worth it. And I can get a smaller sized cart to offset that cost, and I would end up paying less with this new contract than I currently pay. And people can control that. So, I think we can add that add-on and still get the price down. And I salute Epiphany for putting the RFP together, for the way she put it together, the foresighted way she did it. She's absolutely right. This is ahead of the state. It's ahead of Omaha, and I serve with her on the metro area solid waste task force. And essentially, Bellevue and Epiphany are leading what the whole metro area is doing. So, she's put something together that Omaha is partially adopting. And so, I salute her and she's done an exceptional job in this whole process.
Mr. Shannon.
And I too love, anytime Epiphany brings us something over here because she does such a thorough job, even in answering the questions, we're very thorough. So, you know, sometimes the public looks and sees that we have a discussion, take a vote, and think that's all there is to it. But there've been a lot of back and forth and discussions behind the scenes and, you know, us talking about the different proposals and things. And, you know, I wouldn't remember what week was recycle week if we did it every other week. I'll admit it. I mean, it's got to be every week just so I can remember it, you know, if my wife can get me to take the trash out, yeah. So, no, love the thoroughness with which you approach everything you bring to us. It's a pleasure to work with you on things like that. So, thank you for the thoroughness. Yeah, I'm good with this.
Are there any other questions or discussion? See none? Let's vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Sub item B, resolution number 2017-15, authorizing the mayor to sign the program agreement between the city of Bellevue and the Nebraska Department of Transportation in the amount of $3,261,000. 300, $3,261,050.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve resolution number 2017-15 as just read in that amount of $3,261,050.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12, current business.
Sub item A is approval to sign the agreement and to participate in the 1033 program requesting acquisition of a demilitarized MRAP to be used as a Bellevue police rescue vehicle.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the agreement to participate in the 1033 program requesting acquisition of a demilitarized MRAP to be used as a Bellevue police rescue vehicle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? Mr. Preister.
Mayor, just for clarification, I believe this vehicle, as it states, is going to be a rescue vehicle, and I think some people just may want that clarification. So, it's there, we have floods, we have tornadoes, we have all kinds of activities that go on, and this vehicle will be used and it will be reconfigured or repainted, and it will be serving the public in a rescue capacity.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Mr. Preister, that's some of what I was just going to say as well. I normally don't like the idea of militarizing police forces, but in this instance, the intended use and for the vehicle as a rescue vehicle, I think, is appropriate. It's not included in the budget, but the cost is small and it's a good deal.
Captain Dargy, would you like to address the council at all?
Thank you. I just appreciate the opportunity to talk to the council and the mayor about this real quick to just talk about it. The department's basically been looking for some time for a vehicle that offers ballistic protection, able to rescue citizens and officers, and also be available for natural disasters, floods, snowstorms, et cetera. The vehicle has the ability to go forward over streets or over three feet of water. You only need to look at the media today, unfortunately, for what's happening down in Houston, Pulse nightclub shooting, movie theater, officers that get shot weekly. And the department currently doesn't have a vehicle to handle that. And the reason it's basically cost prohibited, to buy a vehicle like that would cost over $500,000. And through this 1033 program, we're basically able to get the vehicle considerably less. And we would, once we get it, we'd basically take it, repaint the vehicle, and then we would be able to use it out on the street when needed.
Are there any questions for Captain Dargy? Mr. Sullivan? I mean, Mr. Shannon.
Do you have projections for what you would estimate it's going to cost to maintain and drive this vehicle?
Well, when we pick the vehicle up, we're also at that time able to pick up spare tires and brakes. And then, it uses an international chassis as well as an engine, which is basically the same thing that our fire department uses in their rescue vehicles. So, we already have all the equipment needed to diagnostic anything that would break down. And then, at that point, we would just use the budget to pay for that we already have, anything that we would need part-wise.
Mr. Preister.
And I believe, Captain Dargy, that some of the repainting and a few of the incidental initial costs are coming out of the forfeiture fund. So, even though it's not budgeted, it's not really anything in the budget currently. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to add that the captain has done his homework and our fleet section is able to maintain this vehicle.
Thank you, Captain Dargy. If there's no question, no, we're good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Sub item B is approval of the low bid from Lund Ross Constructors, Inc., not to exceed $219,795 for the 1500 Wall Street building site work project to proceed as a change order and to authorize the mayor to sign the work change directive.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the low bid from Lund Ross Construction not to exceed $219,795 as stated for the 1500 building and authorize you to sign it.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon.
My question's simple. What the hell is it? There's nothing in the packet that tells us what this is.
Dean, you want to explain that, please?
That's the civil site package. The package that had been awarded is the interior of the building, and this is just the exterior work that needs to be done to upgrade things such as ADA access and drainage and such.
Mr. Modri.
And that work was not included in the original, so we have a change order for it now? Is that right?
Correct. It was originally, this as a kind of states, it was put out for bid separately. We received one bid from Lund Ross, who currently has the contract, so we're processing it as a change order, just to keep the contract a little cleaner or keep things a little cleaner administratively.
Okay, thank you.
So, were they the low bid?
It was the only bid received.
They were the only bid.
Yes.
Mr. Preister.
Essentially, it's two contracts, two bids, but it's being combined at this point because it's the same contractor. So, it isn't actually an add-on, but it's an add-on to the building and to the project. And so, I guess, streamlining it rather than redo a whole contract, it's just put in as an add-on.
As a steward of the people's money, I'd feel a little bit better about authorizing this change order if we could see what we're getting for the money. It just doesn't feel right to say, okay, spend the money and, you know, we don't even get a list of, you know, what we're doing, what we're accomplishing. I mean, this is as minimalistic as we can get, and I'm just not comfortable spending hundreds of thousands of dollars when we're not even being told what we're spending it on.
Well, I think we were just told it's for the handicap accessibility.
Those are some pretty wide.
We can provide a detail of what the work is. We will provide that to the council.
Mr. Hanson. Are there any other questions or discussion? See none? Please vote.
Vote is three to two.
Thank you.
Mayor, because we are expending funds, we have to have a majority of the city council, which would be four. It would give you the authorization to vote on this.
A vote yes. Dean, would you make sure Mr. Shannon and the rest of the council seize the rest of the contract? Thank you. Sabrina, did you get everything you need? Thank you.
Sub item C is approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the retail sales agreement and e-verify between AVI Systems, Inc. and the city of Bellevue for the purchase of hardware, installation, programming, testing, training, and annual support for the proposed design of AV Systems in the 1500 Wall Street building not to exceed $376,643.22.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Burns.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the retail sales agreement and e-verify between. and e-verify between AVI Systems, Inc. and the city of Bellevue for the purchase of hardware, installation, programming, testing, training, and annual support for the proposed design of AV systems in the 1500 Wall Street building not to exceed $376,643.22.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon.
I have a lot of, I have a lot of questions on this one, starting with the correction of the contract. We want the site to show the 1500 building where the items are going, not to 10 West Mission.
That's just an address of where the proposal went. That has nothing to do with where the, everybody knows where the equipment will be installed.
Okay. Then when we get into the specifics of the contract, I don't understand why we're buying AVI equipment with no warranty, and we're paying service charges of $16,000 the first year, and we're paying the person installing it a contract management fee of almost $6,000. So, can someone explain all these things to me?
Well, the, the fees are for all of the equipment to go into basically the council chambers throughout the building, all of the offices that will be outfitted with required phone and audiovisual systems, TV monitors, et cetera. The fees were negotiated. This is a firm that specializes in this kind of equipment, and the, there is a warranty on the, on the work. It's a 12-month warranty. The, the administrator, the fee for making sure that everything is compatible is what you mentioned, the almost $6,000. So, it is just to coordinate and make sure that the, all of the electrical systems are in place to support the AV systems throughout the building.
I guess maybe it would help to understand more of what this AV system's gonna do, because I'm seeing 90-inch TVs being bought for $7,300. I'm seeing 60-inch monitors going all over the place, and 45-inch monitors going in every office. So, I guess, what is the extent and the purpose of?
The largest, the larger size monitors will be for the council chambers, so that the public can see items as they're brought up for the city council to review. The public is at a deficit right now as to the public information they have. What we want to provide for the public is, as you have an item, for example, a plat, we want the public to be able to see the plat. The chamber is going to be larger than this current chamber, thus the larger monitor. We will have several smaller monitors throughout, in the chamber, so that council and the public can see what is going on, what the items are that are before. And yes, some of the offices will have small monitors, as was installed in the 1510 building.
43-inch monitors are not small.
43-inch monitors are about the right size for an office. That's correct.
I don't know what the counts are on these, but there's a lot of monitors and things in here. What are we doing with all this audiovisual capability in, in the individual offices? I understand, too, for the chambers, but we're putting audiovisual in every office, and why are we doing it at this point after the walls are up and finished? I mean, where are the wires all gonna go at this point now?
The walls are not up and finished. They are beginning the drywall, and the electrical installation is being coordinated with that. The monitors in the offices are so that the, as me, for example, if I have the public in, as I do many times, as we tried to when we did the budget hearings for the council, we had to set up a laptop. It would be much easier for us to show plats, areas we're looking at, aerial photographs, whatever the public is interested in at the item, on a monitor on the wall. That's what these monitors will provide.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I see a lot of big monitors in a lot of different places. My, are we gold-plating this? Are we, do we really need all that capability? It's a lot of money.
I would say, do we need it? I think the public deserves it. The public deserves to be able to be shown again, for example, in the, in this city council chambers. The public does not see what you are seeing. The public does not understand fully what you're being asked to vote on. The capability that we are gonna be building into the new building, into the new council chambers, will facilitate the public's information.
Sabrina, would you like to add?
Just to add kind of to what Joe's saying, there's a new system that we're looking at for agenda management software that would, instead of having our archaic voting system here, it would show the votes that are gonna be taken on those screens for the public to see, much easier than these things as well.
Yeah, what Sabrina's saying is, rather than just see council member's name and how you voted, it'll see, the video, or excuse me, the visual will be, what is the matter? What is the motion on the matter? And then what is the vote?
Are there any other questions? See none? Please vote.
Vote is three to two.
I vote yes. Item 12D.
Sub item D is the approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign a proposal number 38713-I-0 and e-verify between SEI Systems, Inc. and the city of Bellevue for the purchase of hardware, installation, programming, testing, and annual support for city hall access control and video systems not to exceed $85,248. This is basically security equipment on the new building.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize for the mayor to sign proposal number 38713-1-0 and e-verify between SEI Systems, Inc. and the city of Bellevue for the purchase of hardware, installation, programming, testing, and annual support for the city hall access control and video systems not to exceed $85,248.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Are there any questions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. While that's being discussed, I would just mention each of these items has a price tag, but it's an important component to a new facility where we need the electronic capabilities to function adequately. I would just comment to Mr. Draper, we are not bonding any of these. They're all being paid with cash. I would say, though, that the, some of the building construction was bonded, but when you can bond at only 3% interest, it's cheaper to do the work today than to wait four or five years. And though we may spend interest, which I don't like, and I agree, you may spend the interest, but in the long run, you get the project done sooner, you get it in use, and it costs less because all the construction costs, the building materials all also go up. So, having a good balance of when you bond and when you don't is pretty important. And on most of these, these here tonight, we're not bonding. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson. Mr. Shannon said, hold on for assistance. Are we good, Mr. Shannon? We're good? Are we good, Mr. Shannon? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 13, administrator's report. Are there any questions for Mr. Manzamelli? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items on the report, Joe, has to do with the quiet zones for the railroad crossings.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned you met with them. Any, anything to report on that? I know I've had some residents pushing for that.
We are in the process of researching that. We've got a information from the railroad as to what they require. We have information from a consultant who has installed some quiet zones in various communities, so we're trying, we're going to be putting that together and providing the information to you since you initiated the request, and then if it's appropriate, we'll bring it forward for our city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Also, you mentioned meeting with representatives of the base about potential pool aquatic, aquatic center partnerships. Anything at all that you can report on that?
We have been working with the base, as well as Bellevue Public Schools, as well as private enterprise here, to explore opportunities for some aquatics, opportunities for the base, which would also serve southwest Bellevue. We are getting to a point where we believe we have a site that could be utilized, that is federal government-owned, that they may allow us to lease. So, those kinds of discussions are continuing, and as we work towards an agreement, they'll be coming to the city council for approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Hitchhiking on that, in the paper this week, Dive Ventures had an article about expanding and wanting to expand in the Midwest. They have a pool and a diving operation they set up out on 120th Street, and they're looking to expand, the article said. I forgot to bring it tonight. But they may be another partner in this process if they want to expand. This could be a private-public partnership for year-round pools. I just hate to see us put so much money in these pools for only eight weeks of the year, and then they sit empty, and we gotta pay all that expense, plus initially the cost. If they can be enclosed, used year-round, you got multiple partners, it just makes sense. And I think you're looking at that and looking at bringing in other people, and Dive Ventures may be another one of those good partners, and I'll bring in that email or try and find it and email it to you.
I have the article.
Oh, good, okay. You're ahead of me, as usual. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
Question on your report, Mayor. P3, can we get information on that?
That's the public-private partnership and with the base, with the private enterprise, as well as the city and the public school.
Okay, moving towards?
You know, there's so much discussion in every conference that I attend, that is going to be the trend, is a public-private partnership. No longer can the public just afford to do it, as well as private enterprise, so it's working together.
Okay.
And how we move through on the legal process of that, that is the discussion.
All right. Anything you can share with the council would be appreciated. Keep us informed on, you know, what comes from these meetings.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? See none? We'll move on to item number 14, public requests to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city official, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual is so attacked as elected official, a city official, or an employer, member of the general public. And City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentations to five minutes. Are there anyone?
Good evening. I wasn't gonna talk about this, but it came up in my, in my, just while I was sitting here. It's this last weekend, I was up in Minnesota for a high school reunion. I stayed with a friend of mine in Forest Lake, and in Forest Lake, they have turnabouts, and also one on the highway, they have one going down to Hugo. And I don't, if we're ever gonna have them or not in any place, but I would certainly recommend that if you do, you go up there and take a look at those, because those are operated properly. And I hope that Nebraskans are as smart as Minnesotans for being able to do a turnabout, but it worked out pretty well when I was up there. I noticed this, after this, after this here, you're gonna have a closed session on the World Baseball Village, and I am definitely don't want you to spend any money. I'll borrow my tax dollars to help these people out. They, you know, they're businessmen. They know what they were doing when they got into the business. They didn't get insurance, that's their problem. They owe those people money. Let them pay that money. I think we helped out quite a bit already, and I don't want any of my tax dollars spent, particularly when you, we're talking about all the stuff we wanna get and all the, all the stuff we don't have. Last meeting, I said the city was broken, and if you look at my website, chuckfrederick.com, you'll see some of the reasons, some of the things you can do to make the city a better city. And you're saying, Mr. Prester's saying, all these things we have to do, all these people, all these things we want, how are we gonna pay for them? Well, one, I'm just gonna mention one, but if you look at my website, you'll see I had a number of ideas that could have been used, that can be used, and one is just for the city attorney. I've been talking for the last four or five years to have a full-time city attorney, and wherever I, anybody, any city has one, has always said that it's worked out better than having a contracted one. The, you know, if you wanna find out where the money's going, we have to stop spending money. And the only way we're gonna do this is have the state auditor come down, Charlie Jensen come down and do an audit of the book. I am disappointed that Mr. Shannon, who I appreciate all the stuff he's been doing in this council, isn't on the audit committee. I'm disappointed that you dropped the budget committee, so he couldn't be on that. It's, we, obviously we got financial problems, and yet you're not solving them, and you're not putting the right people in there to, to help you solve them. This, Mr. Shannon, like I said, I respect what you've done, and I have to apologize for the citizens who appreciate you, because as far as I'm concerned, this recall is witchcraft. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a witch hunt, is what it is. That's witchcraft maybe, too, but a witch hunt. And I know when I was on the council, they tried to recall me, and I got, I didn't get anywhere near the viciousness that you've gotten at all, at all. But I know when I got, when I, after the recall, they didn't get enough signatures, I got all those signatures, every one of them. And some people don't realize that if they sign a petition, they're gonna get that, they're gonna get that, you and anybody else is gonna get that name of those people. And it, with me, when I, when they tried to recall me, I had a list of everybody, but I still did what I thought best for the city. I didn't try to go after anybody at all and talk, and try to go after them, and I just tried to do what was best for the city of Bellevue, and I think this is what we have to do now. Another thing about, people don't realize is that it's gonna cost over $30,000 plus for a recall. I don't think you, I don't think they get enough signatures, but if they did, we're, we're gonna spend another $30,000. We got so many things we got, we should be looking at spending, at spending money wisely. We got a lot of employees here who hire paid employees, and I think if they try to get a civilian job, they wouldn't be paid anywhere near as much as they are right now. They should really appreciate what they're doing, with their, with their health plan that they have. We've got a lot of ways we can cut money, and I think it's time we start doing it. On the library way back, we had somebody come in, a fundraiser, and he was gonna raise the money for the, for the library, and it's, we didn't do anything on it. We just, we just dropped the ball on it. I suggest maybe we, see if we can find a fundraiser again to do the library, and, but again, we need the land where it's gonna be. We need a picture of what the library's gonna look like, and then the fundraiser can go out and raise the money, and I think maybe he can do that again. Who will we get? Thank you very much.
Steve Draper. First of all, I, I wanna thank the members of the council for the hard work you do. You get a lot of input from people, and it's a lot of opposing input. And I know you can't please everybody, but I just appreciate the time and effort that you all put in to, to do. you all put in to do what you do. Couple of things, I wanted to make comments on a few things that have been talked about tonight. One was, there were several gentlemen that got up here and spoke encouraging to spend the full $750,000 for LBA 440, and one of them erroneously said, "The taxpayers expect you to fully fund that when they pass that." Well, I'm sorry, that's not true. I'm one of the taxpayers that voted in favor of that when it, when it came. But the only reason I voted for it was because it was optional. It was not mandatory. Had it been mandatory, I would have, I'll guarantee you, I would have voted against it. But I saw no reason not to approve something that's an optional thing for you to do each year, and I fully expect you as a city council, that's just not a high priority when you've got so many other things that you're dealing with. And as the city attorney brought out, you know, when we, when we do, when we commit money for economic development, it's speculation. It is pure speculation. We're hoping we're gonna get a return on that money, but we have no guarantee whatsoever. And so that's why I think those kind of things need to be kind of towards the bottom of the priority list right now. I heard some gentleman talking about paying yourself first and using that incorrectly to justify doing long-term investments. I'm sorry, that's just not what pay yourself first means. Any competent financial planner knows that you don't do any long-term investing until you have your emergency fund in place first. And then after you do that, then you look at doing some long-term investment. And so any of these long-term projects need to be put aside until we have an adequate emergency fund. I echo Chuck Frederick's comment on the baseball. I think that's a prime example why business should be done by businesses and not by government entities. Government entities are poor at business. They just don't know how to do it, and they don't have the expertise, and that's not why we pay tax dollars is for our government entities to be involved in business. And I think the time will show that the arena that we, that we build out here is gonna be a mistake financially, just as it's, Ralston is showing how much a mistake that was for that town as well. I hear Mr. Prester's comment on, is basically saying we're stuck with the problems we have. You inherited problems, I understand that, but we don't have to, we don't have to accentuate them and keep repeating them going forward. And that's, that's my counsel, if anything to you as member of the council, is let's learn from our mistakes and let's not repeat them. Thank you.
Hi, Brian Hanson, 2704 Georgia Avenue. Again, a couple of comments. I'm sorry Mr. Roberts isn't here tonight, but as you proceed west on Cornhusker and a lot of our streets, thank you for getting the center lines painted, but we still don't have the right turn, left turn onlys filled out there. Take a look for yourself, a lot of our streets are, are not marked the way they should be, and the weather's gonna get colder, and I think it's been since last year that they were marked and stuff. I was just in Grand Island, and I spent many summers there with grandparents, and maybe it's because of the state fair or whatever, but that's sort of our competition. You see, Chuck mentions Grand Island every so often, but they were the third largest city until we took that title a while ago. But we need to get the streets painted fully, the markings, or those citations that the police department's gonna write are gonna get tossed when the judge goes and sees a picture of it and it's not marked with the onlys on them on the pavement. Likewise, the crosswalks, you know, those aren't there, the restraining lines, et cetera. So I hope we can get that done. I spoke earlier in the year about reducing the speed limit on Cornhusker from 45 to 35, and it kinda got, well, we're not sure, and this and that, and it's kinda out there in netherland and stuff. I really think that Cornhusker needs to be reduced from 45 to 35. 22 years ago, when I moved here, there were not many things there, but now it's a dense area. To cross it without protection of a traffic light or to go from one side to the other is, every time, it's, it's look and look again as a driver and stuff, which you do anyway. But it's, it's dangerous for motorists, it's dangerous for pedestrians to walk there, I feel, at 45. Other than that, I appreciated the pothole crew. I saw them working west on Cornhusker today, and two guys hanging on the side of the truck with the asphalt and the roller behind, and they're doing those types of things which are important because all this money we spend on capital assets like streets and things like that, if we don't maintain them, we know they fall apart and they, they get into disrepair and things like that. So hope you'll take a look at those things, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll move on to item number 15, closed session.
I make a motion, while I move at the city council, go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interests. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be negotiations on World Baseball Village and adjacent associated properties. The following individuals will be included in closed session. Joe Manjumeli, Patrick Sullivan, Tim Buckley, and Rich Severson.
You have a motion, we need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be negotiations on World Baseball and adjacent association properties. The following individuals being closed session, Joe Manjumeli, Patrick Sullivan, Tim Buckley, Rich Severson. Thank you.